Good morning. I'll call us to order. And turn it over to Tessa.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Everyone can hear me? I got a thumbs up, so perfect. Am I, are you just gonna show the PowerPoint? Because I cannot share it. Can everyone see my PowerPoint, my screen? Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Committee of the Whole, for meeting this morning. I'm just going to go through a little bit about from our last meeting and the recommendations and talk about what that cost would be. Again, those are the benchmarks. I have some of those in here. We don't need to talk about those, but that's for HHS, as they'll later see the same presentation. So, from the last meeting, keeping our benchmarks, looking at the cost implementation for July 8th, moving HHS to one grid, addressing grades 87 through 91, and moving the rest of the employees into one pay grid. This is again, kind of some of the stuff that we had talked about, and this is kind of where we are today. These classifications, again, are not final. It just kind of gives the board an idea of where the jobs are falling in, what grades they will be. I know there's a couple of department heads that sent job titles that I don't have, so I don't have them in here. So those will have to be updated before we finalize all jobs. But generally, once the, if the board says we're going to move ahead and finalize this, then there'll be a classification appeal for the employee to say, this is where my job falls in. They can explain what's missing from their job or warrants another review. So it's not final. Those are those classifications. This is the proposed grid. So from the last board, or I'm sorry, from the last Committee of the Whole meeting, the board direction was to move everyone into one pay grid. HHS would receive 3%, move into the grid. Grades 87 through 91 would receive 3%, move into the grid, and then all other employees would move into the grid. This makes sure that everyone, we've done that, and that everyone is on the final step. Or somewhere within their pay structure. Are there questions about that, or concerns? Go ahead, Chair, Board. I cannot hear you.
Hear me twice.
Oh, there you go. Perfect.
Can you hear me?
I can.
So on the moving HHS over, I thought I read in there that it would take two extra staff to do the work to now manage the merit system. Is that accurate?
You read that would be two extra staff. I'm
To handle the work of the merits system, because now we have to abide by the merit system, but we're doing our own?
I'm not
I'm not sure. Go ahead, Ann.
I don't believe it would take two extra staff. Obviously, I'm not the one that manages the merit system, but you gotta remember, part of the, when we transitions, HR managers, part of that was to incorporate the new load that we would have if and when we ever go off merit system. So part of that staff is already in place, but I don't see that it would be two staff, no. And I, but again, Mike, Mike and Nina probably are better off to comment on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess
Much better. Yes.
One question I had, and I've, I understand that the first two steps were definitely needed to take off, but I'm still questioning why we're adding two steps on at the end. I understand the incentives. I understand, you know, you have to try to have people keep striving for, you know, to keep retention and stuff. I guess that, I do have a, I think that's just gone a little bit. Because we've already been at that highest point, and I don't think we ever had a problem at the highest end or higher end of the scale. So I guess that would be one of my contentions is, why did we have to increase the two at the, at the end?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
That came up. Go ahead.
Um, so basically, you just recalibrated the grid by taking the two and adding the two. You have to, I mean, you could, if you took off just the two, then you'd be at 10 steps and you wouldn't be, your competitiveness would stay exactly the same, because you hadn't done anything to the maximum. So that's where there would be issues, especially on those in more, like, new grades, 100 through like 112 with your correctional detention, those positions, you wouldn't have adjusted their maximum at all. And that was the purpose for this, was where you are, you weren't able to keep some of your positions, like public health nurses, and some of those other positions. That's why we added the two. Just taking the two away just gets them there quicker, but it doesn't help the maximum. So that would still cause issues for retention.
I think we were losing them when they were in the lower end of the grade, and we weren't losing them at the top end. Am I, am I wrong?
The majority.
The majority of them.
The majority were in the first, like, five or six steps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I don't know if we're necessarily losing them on the top end, but there's, you could ask around and find people that haven't had a step in decades, and they'd probably say that there's an issue.
I'm sorry, you're saying they're already at step 12, so there's no place to?
I don't know. Tessa, do you, do you remember the percentage? But we have a large percentage of people that are capped out, and they're still gonna be capped out on this system.
And I personally know, I mean, I understand that it's capped up, but that, that, that's an achievement. That's great. I mean, we, we have to reach the, because if we go and add two steps right now, are we gonna be right back here again in three, four years saying, wow, you've got to give us another incentive? Or is the 3% COLA gonna just be enough to keep going forward for people? I mean, where, where does it stop?
Yeah, sure. But the issue is, we used to be able to start people at steps one and two. Now, it's like record setting that we're hiring a boatload of people between five and eight.
Yep. And I can understand, we have to get rid of the lower one and two.
Right. But if you're hiring people at eight, that means you could have a four-year employee that's capped out. And you don't want a four-year employee to say, geez, forever, I don't ever get a step here in Goodyear County.
But when we look at the competitiveness of where we're at, and we're already at, on average, 116, 116%, that means some of our jobs are 125%, and some are at 108%, you know, so when you say it's, we're competitive, so why, why do we have to be even higher than that and keep, you know, offering? I think it's just too much.
Sure. We're competitive with our benchmark counties, but we aren't competitive to the counties that we lose people to.
Right. And, and I think we have to, we're gonna reach a point and say, I understand that, but our tax base, we can't compete with that. And I'm sorry. I mean, if people do have to leave, I don't want them to leave, but, you know, I know we feel like a training ground sometimes, but it's, it's, it's what we have. I mean, it's how we have to work with it, I think.
And just a clarification, we, you're not at 116, you're only at 111. 116 was one of the proposed to get you at. So if you did, if you just cut, cut off the first two and didn't add, you would still be at 111 of your benchmark average. And again, that's meaning that you're slightly above the average, and some of those counties are smaller than you. But again, that's a pay philosophy of the board.
All right. Tessa, I have one more question, and that is, I know originally, or I mean, at some point, I mentioned the possibility of instead of four, at the top, that 80 to 124%, instead of going up 4% on every single one of them, that at the beginning, where we so desperately need to hire people, possibly having a 5% jump, and then at the top grades where we are, as Todd said, what we think is competitive, that maybe they're 2 or 3%, because there would still be the 3% COLA on top of that.
Right. Well, the COLA changes every year depending on inflation.
But let's, all right, let's.
Yeah, you can change the percent between steps. The question would be, if you want to keep your min and maxes the same, so if you want to keep the philosophy of the board to be above the market, if you just changed it and lowered it, you would lower your maximum, obviously. So I guess the first question would be, you know, we've talked about this before, where do we want to be in relation to the market? And then it would be, how fast do you want employees to get there? But yeah, you could definitely with this, I mean, you could make the 80 to 84, 85, you know, or I'm sorry, 1 to 2 is 5, 2 to 3 maybe is 5, and then slow it down, if that's what your intent is. But if you keep the same wage range, it would keep your, your same competitiveness with the market. You would just get it at the top end when you're coming in, and then it would slow down. Some entities do that, some do it the other way. So it depends, that philosophy of how you want to pay employees, and your suggestion would suggest that you want to get them there and get them in there, and you're such a great place to work that maybe you could slow that down because they are staying.
Okay. I was looking, I think that the, moving the 87 to 91s up, I think on the last presentation, you had a dollar amount for what that cost for the higher ones? And I could dig through my information and find it, but I thought maybe you could find it more quickly.
She's got it in here, too.
For the 87 to 91s?
She, she has it.
Okay. That's what I wanted to. The thing that, that I was looking at, you know, I know that it says the total estimated levy increase is 1.7, but that really is for this jump. It was, if we look at the 3% COLA, the step increases, that everybody is already getting this, and then we add the health insurance on top of that, that amounts to a 5.58%, and I understand there's places to get it other than just the levy, but it is a 5.58% increase. And I do think that handicaps us from doing other things. And it might be that the priority is to raise the wages, but then it has to be understood that we can't do everything on everybody's wish list if we're doing over $2 million on wages and benefits. And so perhaps that's the best use of our money, but then, as a board, we can't keep having requests for more employees and more benefits and more, all kinds of things, because we don't have the tax capacity to pay for that.
They can have the request all day long.
Well, we have to learn to say no. Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's right. And I'm, I, we have
They're gonna continue to come every time we turn around, another personnel committee is asking for more employees.
Yeah, yeah, but we won't be, we won't be able to meet those requests, because we don't have the resources.
Meeting, and they're gonna present it to you and say, this is stuff you approved.
Yeah, but I, but I think we have to start, I think we have to start having these approvals as part of the budget process, and not separate from the budget process.
Come and ask. We have to tell them.
All right. Well, that's what we'll have to do. That's what I, that's, that would be my view, that we have to be saying no to a lot of things that people want.
Yes. Can't have your cake and eat it, too, you say?
Well, we, we have to live within the means of what we have. Yeah.
All right. Tessa, I'm back to you.
All right. Um, so this is what the new pay grid does. And to your question earlier, Commissioner, this is the July 8th implementation cost, so just HHS would be about 314 hundred thousand. Grades 87 through 91, about 85,000, and the rest of the employees. So that is the total for this year going forward as of July 8th.
So I agreed with your point, Todd, but I wasn't sure if the $85,000 was enough of a savings to not include everybody on the grid. Yeah, that was what my question.
Not a frustration. It's a, when I look at it and think, you know,
It's a concern.
It's a concern.
Yeah, I understand.
Spending the money right, but.
And that's, it's still $85,000 that we can't spend on a new employee or a piece of equipment, or whatever that might be.
So Scott, from your perspective, would it be fair to say that getting all the employees onto one pay grid is a very, very high priority?
Yes. In fact, I believe that was the county board's number one goal this year. And I think the second one was recruitment and retention.
All right. So I would concur with what Commissioner Bettr says, which is, this could be the only thing that we can afford to do this year, then, would be to get everybody on the grid. So, just so everybody well, knows that possibility.
Sure. Oh, thank you. I think it's important that when you, when we talk about what we can afford and whatnot, I think, you know, Commissioner Bettr has a good point about trying to get more of this stuff focused in through the budget process, so that when we are making big budget decisions, we we're making, we're looking at the whole big picture at that time. And I think that might be easier, because there, there is a lot of new money coming into the budget this year and next year as well. Now, I understand some of that's one time, but there is, the state legislature did help county government this year.
Right. And I understand that, too. But because we, as a board, don't have a real handle on what all that is, nor do we have a handle on what all the requests are.
Right.
If we approve this request, I think other requests have to become part of the budget process.
True.
And not at every board meeting, we're approving this, that, and the other thing. And then all of a sudden, we've approved another 5%. That, that's my concern.
I mean, you have an opportunity to, today, to say no to two requests.
I understand that. Or to at least table them till the budget process. Yeah.
All right. Tessa?
I was just gonna add, I couldn't hear what HHS said about the adding the positions to the merit. I'm not sure if you're microphone, but I would only anticipate this would help, because you're on several pay grids right now for HHS, and merit just says you have to pay within a range. This would be, you know, some of it would be higher than that range, but I don't anticipate this grid causing that issue. Exiting merit is gonna maybe create some different kind of workload changes. But I just wanted to clarify, I didn't think that this would add staff work, as it should make it easier with one pay grid for all.
I think we got that taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Tessa, just so you know what the comment was in the audience, and they, they don't have a microphone out there, is just that that number of two staff was from an old board report from like eight or nine years ago. And, and the staffing level in HR is significantly different, and able to accommodate it now.
Okay, good, because I was a little worried there. Perfect. Okay. So this is the, and then I know last time, Commissioner, you asked for me to do a 2024 cost comparison. So if, if the board says yes today, we understand that it is this cost here, but what does that mean for next year when we're budgeting? So I tried my best to say, if the county remained in its current systems, and I put systems, because HHS would be in their multiple, and all of that, that you would have a 3% COLA regardless, and that's about $961,000. You'd have general step increases also, and then that total payroll would, would be there. Our new pay grid, if you went ahead and with these changes, and then did a 3% COLA, you can see, obviously, the COLA goes up because wages have changed this year. So there's that difference. The 1.2 million would just be step increases. So total wage payroll of 29 million. So that difference is about Part of that would be reimbursed from HHS, so it's not all levy dollars. But we're anticipating, I know it said 1.7, if, we're not sure exactly what that HHS would be, so it may go up to 2%. I understand you also have a lot of benefit changes that I did not account into. My 1.7 is only wages, and that's only saying if the county didn't do anything in 2023 from what it normally was. That's that cost, and this would be the new cost.
Yeah. So it's the, I think, 1.38 million plus whatever more we would, would do here, and plus the health insurance. That's where I came up with the 5.58%.
Will you say that again?
Well, we had already agreed to the 3% COLA.
Yep.
We'd already agreed to steps, and that, Tessa's numbers were a little bit different than what Andrea gave me, but that added up to 1.38 million. And then the increased cost of the health insurance is 232,000. And then if we add this number of 724,000, then we end up with 2,086,000, which is about a 5%, or, excuse me, by the time, I have two different sets of numbers here. So health insurance, it's a little over 5%, which is higher than our entire levy increase last year, which was 4.69%. Yeah. So it's a lot of money. Now,
But that's the actual levy increase you're looking at?
Well,
Or that's the wage increase?
That, that's the amount of money that we would be adding. There are other ways to pay for it. There's gonna be more county program aid. There's also money coming in because of, of the change in the probation system. And, you know, if we do the wheelage tax, so we could get that down. And is it okay if I talk a little bit about our conversation? Yeah, so Scott and I had a conversation, because I was concerned about this. And I think inflation is predicted to be 3.5% this year, and who knows if that's really how it will play out. But Scott felt that with all the money coming in, we would be able to keep the levy increase somewhere between 3 and 5%, depending on what we say yes to and what we say no to, even with accepting this package, which would be the 5.58%. So in, in a way, it's a good year to do it, in that there's other resources coming in, but it's a big cost, and I suspect even if we keep ours to 3.3 to 5%, I suspect we'll be higher than most of the surrounding counties, because they'll be getting this money coming in, too. Yeah.
When you say that there's 300,000 from HHS, is that what was budgeted for last year?
The, for the reimbursements?
Yeah.
Their reimbursements are about 23%, because some positions actually have no reimbursement, and some have, you know, more like 50%.
And now, we have put some in budget for last year for this money, too, right?
We did, yes.
And that is, will be
It's in fund balance.
So that would cover the 2023 costs.
Yep.
But it wouldn't cover the 2024 cost.
Well, you could apply some of it towards there, because we, there's more.
I see. So we could.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brad, do you have some comments?
Well, quite frankly, if we're not, my, my position has always been, if we're not gonna bring, not gonna bring everybody on board, especially in HHS, then I'm not interested in doing it. We need to get to one pay grid. We've messed around with this for three years. We put people on at so many different points. I think the cost of it keeps going up every time we do that. I think it's fish or cut bait, in my mind. We either need to just implement the whole thing and move forward, and do the ongoing study of pay as we go forward in this changing market. And from there, you know, what happens is not, some of it's not within our, within our power to control. It's the market. It is what happens. I mean, where was I just the other day? And it surprised me, there was a $1,000 sign-on bonus and a $2,500 Oh, I was at a, at a quick trip in Red Wing. $1,000 to sign on and, and work, and 2,500 if you want to be a store manager. And it's like, you know, those kinds of things are happening in the market all the time. Are they gonna end up raising them to $2,000 for just a cashier, or are they gonna, are they gonna get enough? And my gut reaction is, they're not. And we're gonna be fighting that in the public sector from here on out for the near future. So I think the faster we get in line and get people on, on our staff and, and and reward them for what the work they do, the better chance we have of, of having employees rather than running short all the time. Because we heard that loud and clear in the meetings that Susan and I and Sue Johnson sat in on with, with HHS. They're, they've been over, over caseloads since I got on the board, and we've not addressed that. And now we're at a point where we are addressing that. And that's gonna make that work environment better. And I think if we reward them adequately for the work they do, we will have employees. If we don't, I think we're gonna be in trouble. And the, the one thing I have to say about when you get to the 87 to 91 employees, you know, you have to really, everybody does hybrids everywhere. If I look at Rice County, Rice County has a county administrator, and they have Mr. Johnson, who is the assistant county administrator. So they really have, in Scott's position over there, they have two people. If you go to Olmsted County, they have a, it's the same thing. They have an administrator and an assistant administrator, and then they have a layer of people underneath that. So comparing apples to apples at the high end is very difficult, because everybody does a hybrid of some sort. And the workloads are different because of that. So I, I just caution people, if you, if you're gonna look at those upper positions, you better know exactly what we're comparing to, because we're not comparing apples to apples in many of those positions. Nobody that I know of has the finance director in charge of assessing also. That's not a, that's not a thing in most counties. They're separate. So we do hybrids, and, and it really affects how you compare those numbers when you chart, start saying, we're paying this much percentage, but what is the job load of those people? Because it is different. Because they do have assistants, and they do have a, a set of directors or, or mid-management that's in there that we don't have. So it is very different. But I support going to everybody on the scale move forward with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, if everybody could remember, there is life outside of the government in Goodyear County. And that life of being asked to pay for all of this. So keep that in mind. Agree with Todd of what we said and Susan, that there's, there's only so much we can handle. Questions on how a lot of this is being implemented, but at the moment, I get, you know, we've all been on board with moving to one grid. I think that's been general consensus. We'll get there. Problem I have at the moment is implementation of July 8th. During our closed session, we were told that it could cause a little bit of issues. I thought we had a general consensus that it was a benefit or best to implement it all at the first of the year. That somehow changed over the last meeting, that we said, well, it's not a big deal, we can deal with that, that we're on some hurry, which I don't know what it is, but I will not support other issues of this, but I'm not gonna support implementation until January 2024, so.
In the sense that people already negotiated what they have.
We've settled contracts. Settled contracts. You still have issues. It's we're not. I'm fine with twenty twenty four, so that's where I'm at with it, so.
The sure. Um, the it's important to remember, um, in the, well, the board can choose whatever implementation date they have. But um, from the beginning of the pay study, two and a half, two years ago, the board had talked about that people can negotiate uh their way onto the scale. What we need to remember is that a hundred percent of the people you're talking about today that aren't on the scale don't negotiate. So it it's your job to take care of them. HHS, there's no negotiation. Eighty seven to ninety one, there's no negotiation. All of the other groups, they do negotiate. And some of them have been on the pay scale for two years.
Other comments at the moment?
I like your idea of changing those percentages across the top. I think if we're looking at keeping staff and getting staff on, it's maybe better to have a higher percentage at the start of it. And then drop it off as it's going to step ten, eleven and twelve.
Right. It's the early spots that are.
But that's that's where the people are. They they're seeing the hourly, you know, and I know we talked about it last month that, you know, we're adding more um vacation time, you know, we get, I mean, thirteen paid holidays. I mean, that's from a lot of jobs. That's an extra week off. I mean, it's it, there are some definitely some benefits to being in the county government, you know, and but if that's all they're looking at is their dollar per hour and, oh, I get four dollars more or I get three dollars more. And if that's what they're seeing, is it more important to get those up a little quicker? But still keep it within the same range.
Same beginning, the same end, but.
Yeah, just move it up quicker.
Which would increase costs some, yeah.
Tessia, is that something that we can do?
Yeah, I can figure out those numbers if you tell me to do it before your nine o'clock meeting. I will not have that done.
Ten to fifteen minutes, that'll work, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I I can, that's definitely doable. I I it'll definitely change a little bit. Um, just because some of those HHS employees are gonna be moving into the system because they're undermarket right now. So it'll, I I'm anticipating your biggest change would go a little bit up in HHS. Um, just because of that, um.
But then it'll also come down in the others then, right?
It 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 could, yeah. I, yeah, I'd have to run the numbers and I can do it fairly quickly. I just don't know that I can do it in ten minutes.
No, we understand that. From the standpoint of where we yes, trying to hire people and keep people after what, three, four, maybe even five years? I guess H uh, you'd have to tell me if that's true, where we start losing them. But I guess that was the direction I was thinking about is that if that is where we are having our biggest problems, bringing people in, then that that would be where I'd like to see a bigger incentive.
How many people would be hired on step one on this grid?
It it really, it's tough to tell, but right now, um, and I ask the HR managers, but as a percentage, I mean, I think we're we're hiring way more between five and eight. I mean, that that unless in the except for the areas where a contract requires us to start them at one or two, um, there's not very many people starting at one or two anymore. Yes, Brad has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you're muted, Brad.
Brad, go ahead.
Well, just just I I if we're gonna do that, I want Tessa to make sure she takes enough time to make sure that that doesn't create a different kind of compression when you start people at at a accelerated scale. And then the upper end doesn't get. I'm just afraid that it might cause some compression if you if you do that. And maybe it won't, but.
Or what would happen?
Pardon?
What would happen if we just got rid of step one?
Got rid of step one? We got rid of two steps already. You wanna get rid of three?
Well, if no one's being hired at that step.
Well, it's not no one because there's some places, there's some
Very few though.
Contracts that we have to start people there, but um in in general, your salaried people, well, no, we're not starting hardly anybody there. Because the the that part of our scale is not competitive.
Right, I understand that. But it's still.
The only thing I'm concerned about is if you're moving the front end of the scale really fast and slowing it down, that you will cause a different kind of compression than the compression that we've been talking about. And maybe it isn't, but I just wanna make sure um Dr. Melvin takes enough time to look at that, that we don't go ahead and do something then that later we'll regret.
For charity.
Can we ask her what she's?
We try fixing one thing and it just adds changes another?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I believe that's where we've been since we started this. So it seems to me that if you've got, that even at the top end, if you bring it down to three percent and then whatever the cola is for that year, I mean, I'll go with an average of three percent. That's still a six percent raise every year, which seems more than adequate.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um Scott, but I think this is the first time since I got on the board that we've had a three percent cola.
Uh, this this year was three percent. The the important thing to remember about general adjustments is they usually uh travel a little bit with inflation. Everybody knows that inflation last year and this year's was significantly higher than both the general adjustment and historically what what inflation's been.
Yeah, they've typically been um two point seven five and down.
Yeah, I think the three, three of the years, Brad, I think were two, seven, five, two and a half and two and a quarter that you're referring to. But but historically, there's been threes in there too.
Three is, huh? I didn't hear that.
Historically, there are threes though also.
Three percent. There is also three percent. All right. Well, it certainly seems to me that our biggest issue is, one, we all do agree we wanna try to get to one pay grid. That I think we have exasperated, that most of us also fully understand that the tax base that we have in Goodyear County is only so much, and therefore we can only spend so much. Though if this is our number one goal for the rest of this year or January twenty four, whenever we decide, but it is to get us onto one grid. And that might be financially all we can afford to do. We won't know till we're in the budget process, correct?
Right. And so till we understand all the pieces.
Yeah, right. So from my perspective, it's a lot of perspectives to look at and it's challenging. All right, Tessia, is there more that you have?
I I don't. I just wanna, I I guess I can definitely um redo the percentages that'll impact the cost. I guess the question would be the July eighth implementation, because that would impact whatever cost you have.
Right. All right. Well, first of all, does anybody else besides me are curious about that we have a larger jump at the beginning, maybe uh five percent on the top of the pay grid instead of four straight across and then slow down as you get higher up? I don't know if anybody else is that interested in that.
Well, it makes sense to me. So when you you front load it, then the percentages become a little bit higher. So we'd have to leave the starting in the top the same. And not do three, three, five, 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 three, 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 because it would end up higher that way, I think. Because five percent is good.
Okay.
So I I'm interested in that, leaving the top and the bottom numbers where they are, but front loading it a bit because I think it's in the first few years that we lose people.
Right. But Jason?
Yeah, I'd be fine with seeing like the first three or four steps. You go to a six percent and slow the top to match up the top half. You can cut them back down to two.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
I get the compression in every which way, but like Tom, like we've all mentioned, but this whole steps are employees that have been here the longest, they really are only gonna be on step increases for two to three years.
Right.
With coal and then they're gonna hear the same thing. They haven't got a step for. Which is reality of private sector, the pain.
Sure.
Brad? Your comment on that?
Well, you you're probably, well, you might not like the numbers when they come back.
Yeah.
Um, with the number of people in the first five years and how much more that's gonna cost when you put a higher percentage in the first five years. So the numbers, the numbers that we got might not be a whole lot different. Um, or they might be even higher for the cost implement. I mean, you can ask a question, you can get the answers. I I'm I'm until I until I see that, I can't say that's a that's a really good idea because it may really cost you a lot more money. I don't know that.
So I'd really like.
The direction, if that's the direction you wanna go, um, fine. It sounds to me like we're not gonna make any kind of a decision today on implementing either this or getting out of the merit system in either of the two meetings coming forward because we haven't got, it sounds like the majority of the board doesn't have, isn't ready to make that decision. Because you need more information.
All right. So then the other question is July eighth or January of twenty four.
Or something else. So pardon, it could be something in between too, hadn't it? Meaning, um, how can we vote on it if we're waiting for another number? I think Brad's right about that. We have to know what the number is to be able to vote on it.
So Tessia, is that true that we could, all right, so July isn't the time period where we're ready yet? But could it be September? As opposed to January?
Yeah, you, I mean, you you can do that. I just, if I don't know what it is, I can't give you a cost. And if you're so stuck on, we need to know the cost before we make a decision, it would be better to know what that is, because if I do October first or July first, those are gonna be very different numbers.
Okay.
Um, and I also need a clarification because I heard one commissioner say five, five and then three. And then another commissioner say started out at six. I just need clarification so that when I come, we don't say, oh, well, I'd like to see this option too because um you want a cost and I I'll need to know what that, what you're changing so that I can have a cost. And then what is that implementation date, if that makes sense?
Right, yeah, yeah.
With chair.
Okay, yes.
But if I could just say a couple of things about this, you know, I I get the speeding up of the scale in the beginning because we we do have an issue there. But if it's not even throughout, let me just give you a couple of examples. So let's just say we speed up the first five steps and we know that historically, like appraisers, we we lose them once we train them. So if you take the life of appraiser, great, I got the beginning pay. But now I'm staring at you, you're just gonna slow me down the back half of the scale. So you're consenting me to go somewhere else that doesn't do that. Secondly, if you look at internal promotions, rarely we do we internal promote to like step one or two. Okay, so more than likely, they're they're coming in somewhere in the middle of the scale. And now by taking a supervisor or a department head position, we're saying, we really appreciate that you're doing this, but we're gonna slow your pay down now.
But they've already started at an increased rate.
Right.
And hopefully increasing that is gonna keep them from going to Dakota or wherever. Hopefully, we've, you know, and maybe we're never gonna compete with Dakota. I mean, that's just, that's just part of where we're at. But, you know, but we're, we've we've moved it up that much quicker and we hope they will look at that.
Just thinking, sometimes by trying to solve an issue, sometimes we create another issue. And actually, I wouldn't mind if the H HR managers would come up and comment on that theory.
It's been happening. You also have to understand if your max pay is forty dollars, you start off at twenty, your percentage, it doesn't matter if you get to thirty, even you're still getting to forty dollars, but you get a four percent increase all those years. I mean, granted, that percentage increase is higher for your cola. But if you're taking a supervisory position and you're gonna get to forty dollars, whether it's four percent every year or two percent every year, you're still getting to forty dollars, so.
Yes.
Her mic isn't on?
A little button. There you go.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. Commissioners, my my concern is is that oftentimes we do, well, we try to promote from within when that's available. So if we've got someone who we've started, let's just say at a grade eighty four position, and we're moving them up the scale, right? And they're prepared now to take on more responsibility and move into a supervisory management department head role. Um, you know, we'd look at where we're gonna slot them on the new um pay grade, right? Um, and we're slowing down the percent of increase that they that they get year over year. When they are taking on greater responsibilities, they are leading our organization. I'm wondering if we are rewarding those individuals and what that, you know, slowing things down on the second half, what that does um for our ability to to move people around internally. Um, I I think you made the point, you know, maybe you solve one problem, but you do you create another? And and, you know, we're we're speculating, of course, but um that's a concern I have as we look at.
Depends on what grade they would be.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, lots of unknowns.
You could make a choice. Brian, I have a question for you, because I think you talked about the assessors in Dakota County. And I I thought you believed they increased faster and then slowed down, but maybe I misunderstood that.
And if you're gonna answer it, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Maybe I misunderstood or am remembering that incorrectly.
Looked at this a couple of years ago. I think it was that we ended up fairly close at the end of the whole spectrum, I guess.
Yeah.
And so, um, but the fact that we can go above one and two, personally, I'd like to see it just stay the same across the board. I think you are pushing the puddle around a little bit, as what Scott was saying. So I think if you keep consistent going across and if you're allowed to hire, hire um than one or two, if the person has the experience, and so be it. Um, let us deal with it on this end, I guess, and where we're gonna place the person. Because the other thing you're gonna end up, I think, is somebody's gonna come in and then they're pretty soon gonna be kinda stepping on the heels of the person that's been here for three years too. Um, seems like that's an issue, but we take a very close look at where we're gonna place somebody. So we're not, you know, putting somebody right behind somebody else and um depends on their qualifications and stuff too.
I was accurate in that the assessors at Dakota County end up about the same place, but they're moving up faster or starting out higher.
Yes, a couple of years ago. And there there's a grid differently. They don't have the number of grades that we do. For ours, theirs is all written as a one, I believe, and it's expected that they will get, uh, you know, they will take their tests and pass their exams and everything else. So it's all written into the same grade.
And and they have a different pay philosophy. They're not on a step chart the same way that we are either. They're not.
They're paid for performance.
Oh.
And why don't we do that?
We'd have to get everybody to agree to it. Yep.
That'd be a significant change.
That's new information.
Something to think about. All right.
One uh one more question. Now Brad said they saw a thousand dollar bonus. Is that something counties can do or is that something we wanna totally stay away from?
There's counties that have done uh hiring bonuses uh in certain uh areas. They there's places that have done what they call merit pay bonuses. There's places that have done stay bonuses. Um, uh, and like City of Red Wing, as an example, they did some hazard paid uh bonuses. They did a stay bonus. They they've done like two or three different ones. Um, and I think they tiered theirs where the lower end of the scale got like a three percent and then the middle of the scale got like a two percent and then the upper scale got like a one percent.
I think it might have even been based on years of service.
Okay, yeah. So there's, yeah, there's plenty of places that do it.
So when we're looking at our lower end or first starting out and say, is there a different incentive we can give there and keep this at four across, then we don't have to fight it and deal with it? Is there anything else that we can do to incentivize that more?
Absolutely. And if you if you recall, the county board's second goal of the year was recruitment and retention. And um, you know, the the HR has been working on some different ideas. They didn't wanna go too far with it because they know your number one is to get this done. And then we've also heard that, you know, what else can we afford? So they don't wanna go out and resurvey a bunch of employees about, hey, what what what'll keep you here? When at the end of the day, maybe maybe it is all we can do is to implement this this year. And maybe maybe some of those are.
Take it slow.
Yep, so some of these are maybe yours ideas for next year. Or the year after.
Based on what was said, I mean, perhaps staying at four percent across the top makes the most sense, I don't want to create more problems for us. So then the biggest thing is whether or not you want to do it July first, January first, October first. When do we start the budget hearings?
Uh, we'll have uh, budget workshops starting in August, um, people are working on budgets right now. But I mean, the parameters of what uh, Susan was talking about is, that's, those are things we pretty much know. We also know there was uh, I believe it's two additional positions approved during the year that were not budgeted. Those were both, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars approximately.
Would it be possible for the board to get some of that information before August, so we understand better what numbers we're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think it's, some of those numbers have been included in emails.
Right, 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 it's nice when they're summarized.
Yeah, I mean, it's, because uh, that's where I think you've gotten some of these from, so yeah.
Yes, it is where I've gotten some of it.
Could certainly get those to you.
Yeah.
Andrea's got them at her fingertips, so.
So it, it seems like we can't really solve all the problems with one pay grid in a certain sense. So if the problem is at the beginning, then we'd want to front load the beginning, but if the problem's at the end, we wouldn't want to do that. And so it seems like in the end, we're concluding that keeping it the same across the grid is a reasonable thing to do. It's, doesn't solve every problem, it still may leave us with some problems at the lower end, but of the choices available. Now, the pay for performance is a totally new concept that we can't think up today.
Yeah, we can think about in the future.
Right.
But I think it would be a very good idea to think about.
Sure, absolutely, to understand it and to uh, know how it works and all of that kind of thing, but not today.
So we're still back to your opinion on implementation date.
And from HR, can I get kind of an explanation to the advantages of July versus January, the advantages of January versus July?
Sure, so um, for the groups who haven't had the pay study implemented, obviously, the sooner the better is, is, is the short answer for a, a July implementation and, and really making sure that those groups feel rewarded, um, and that their compensation is, is fair and equitable. Um, when we look at a January implementation date, um, for everyone, obviously, um, you've got the, how do I say this, continuity of, of having everyone, you know, done at the same time. So I mean, I, I think from an HR perspective, it's great if we, the sooner we can get everyone on the same pay grid, that would be preferable.
Since the money's been set aside to do that, it's, it's already there. Um, to me, it makes sense to respect the employees and, and go with the July first date. But uh, that is where I'd be coming from.
July, yeah.
For all or for?
What?
For all?
Yeah, okay. That's, if we're gonna do it, let's do it.
And then as far as like the leapfrogging, Jason was saying, why do it now, and it's like till January, how many people will that affect? Like the.
So when, when we look at actually going through the implementations, that's when we'll be able to answer that question. Because if we look at this grid and where the person's going to move on to the new grid, that's when we're going to find those issues of, okay, if I, I put, you know, employee one at step four, and then someone with um, more service maybe would, would come in at step three, then we need to do something with those anniversary dates to prevent, you know, the less senior person from leapfrogging the more senior person, so. Um, to some extent, I really can't answer that question until we look at, you know, what exactly it takes to implement all those groups.
And even the ballpark, is it ten people or a hundred people?
Yes, that's, that's, that's a fair question. Um, I, I think in the last um, pay study implementation, we ended up making a lot of anniversary date changes. So my hope is that by correcting those, when we implement into the, the new grid, we won't, we'll have fewer of those. But as far as a, a number, I don't know if I can rattle that off for you, I wish I could.
Not even between those two?
I'd be surprised if it was much different than about ten.
All right, so that'd be your impression?
And you'll have, no matter what date you pick, you're gonna have, you have to look at that, because there's always leapfrogging.
You're definitely on January?
Well, I hate to say your folks are contradicting yourself, but you are, unless you want to listen to the the closed session we had, and thought we came to consensus and we said that the leapfrogging was an issue. Imagine that, employees are wanting implementation as soon as possible to get their rates. Of course, it would be ideal. My aspect of bringing this up and talking about it is because we were presented with the fact that leapfrogging, the time and the effort may not be insurmountable, but it is time, it is effort to put in. You need to add that, so you're not contradicting yourself, it is time and effort put in that may not be required in January first. That's why I brought it up, is because that's what the impression we had with our labor attorney during our full session, that it would be easy, easier to implement January first. So if we're contradicting ourselves and going backward and saying it's not a big deal, get the raises out there, make everybody happy right away, and that's what we presented to with our administration, HR, and our labor attorney, then I'm on board with January for July eight. Fine, but that's not what we were presented, so that's why I said January first.
Brad?
Well, when you talk about the leapfrogging, everything we've done, when you talked about the leapfrogging, everything we've done has been a January implementation. For all the, all the unions we've done it with, and there was leapfrogging there. So saying that it's not going to have leapfrogging on January one isn't really accurate. You're gonna have it no matter when you do it, I think that's what staff's saying. I say just go ahead and get it done now.
Okay. Well, I think I would be leaning in the direction of, let's just do it.
Yeah, they've already read our screen.
July eight.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept.
No motions in committee at all, we'll do that in the calling board meeting.
All right.
You, just wait a little bit.
All right, you've got about thirty seconds, and we'll take a two-minute break, any other comments? All right.
Thanks, Tessa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.